All right, good evening. It is 6:00 PM on October 24th and I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order and ask that you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic of which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Prayna.
Present.
Mr. Krimm. Mr. Lopez. Mrs. Moore.
Present.
Dr. Navarres Martinez.
Present.
Mr. Nabisky.
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Mrs. Willis.
Present.
Who are Ms. Present?
Thank you. Mr. Krimm did let me know that he is running a little bit late. He should be joining us shortly. And Mr. Lopez is graciously representing this board as our delegate at the MASB conference, so he will not be with us this evening. With that being said, we would like to start out by reading our district mission statement. I am going to ask Ms. Moore to read it for us this evening.
Yes. Our mission is to provide a high-quality education in a culturally safe and nurturing environment that supports all students to live purposeful and fulfilling lives.
Thank you. Next, are there any additions on the agenda this evening? Before we get started on public comment on any agenda items, I would like to acknowledge trustee Williams for appointed privilege.
Madam President.
Ms. Williams.
I'd like for us, if possible, to have a moment of silence for a Sextina alumni, Joel Ferguson, who passed away this past Saturday. He was a class graduate of 1956, but also a big supporter of the Lansing Promise. So at this time, if we could have a moment of silence for him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments this evening on, any board members want to make any comments this evening on the passing of esteemed community member Joel Ferguson?
If I may start, Madam President.
Sure thing.
We had a kind of aha moment this week. I've been with the family in and out, but my oldest son, his first presidential election, he got a chance to stand next to Joel Ferguson. And that was our first meeting of Joel Ferguson with us being here. And we got to learn so much about the things that he does in the community, the development, the Democratic National Convention, just how much he loves Lansing. He has Lansing homegrown. And as I was talking to my boys about him this week, they both were really like, Mom, it's somebody that in history, we know. He is really just, and I just say, keep his family in prayer. One of his daughter's dory works at Patton Gill. So just know that, family, we are thinking about you. We love you. Joel is truly going to be missed.
Thank you. Any other comments from colleagues? All right, Seena, then we will move on to any public comment on agenda items, which there are none. There's no presentations this evening. So that brings us to our report from Superintendent, Mr. Schuldiner.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. It's lovely to be here. As the days get shorter, I can look out these windows and see the sun is setting. Last time we were here, it was still very much high in the sky. You know, certainly as a reminder, as things get darker earlier, please be safe when you're going home from school late. Please make sure that you have easy access to getting home. If anybody, anybody ever has issues getting home at night, please talk to your school, talk to your principal, and certainly reach out. Transportation, certainly in the dark, is a lot harder than transportation in the light, which, speaking of, of course, is the segue of where we are with our gas cards, our CATA cards, and our buses. Things are looking up. So with gas cards, we now have over 2,500 requests. It's 2,506. And we have given out 2,301. Now, you might say to yourself, there's a 200-person discrepancy. Why haven't you just given everybody their gas card? Well, what we're, of course, recognizing is that people will ask for the gas card, not knowing about the eligibility. So the reason why there is a discrepancy right now is that we have a lot of people that are asking for it, and then we have to look up their address and make sure that they're eligible, and then, of course, we will assign it. So as the year goes on, you'll see that number shrink between the requested and the actual handing out. CATA cards, it's the same thing. We have 687 requests and 606 that we have given out. You'll see that number shrink as well, the differential. And then with Dean, I certainly am happy to note that we have more bus routes running this year than we have in, really since COVID. And we have now 3,764 requests, and we have been able to route 3,516. And again, I will continue to give these numbers until we are at a point where every kid who wants a bus can get a bus, or every kid that wants a way to get to school can do that. But the good news is that over the last now four years, this number has gotten much, much better. Speaking of numbers, we haven't really been together for a while. So, you know, hopefully, everybody saw the incredible news that our unaudited, again, unaudited graduation numbers are the highest they've ever been. They're incredibly high. I am so proud of the teachers. I'm so proud of the students, of the families, of the principals, of the entire community. We could not have done this without every single person pitching in. So just as a reminder, when I started here, the graduation rate was 62.1%. And now, our unaudited numbers for last year, so over three years, is a whopping 86.9. So people like to round up. I always want to play it straight. So 86.91, a growth of almost 25%. And I want to just assure the community that we didn't get there by cutting corners. We didn't get there by lowering standards. In fact, the Lansing School District, in order to graduate from our high schools, you have to have 22 credits, which is four more than the state requirement. So our children are actually doing more work than they need in order to graduate. The way we were able to do this, and certainly I get asked this all the time, is by really making sure that the schools, the teachers, the community, the students were focusing on getting there. We have so many wonderful mentoring programs, so many wonderful tutoring programs, our teachers, et cetera. And when you have a goal, you know, you really do try to hit it. And the fact is, is our goal was 85% graduation rate in, by 2027, well, in five years. So basically, the 2025, 2026 school year, we've now hit it two years early, which is incredible. So I just cannot praise this district enough for focusing on it and doing it. So now, let's raise those test scores. Let's raise those proficiency scores. Let's raise those attendance rates, which we've already been doing, but I know that that's something that we're going to continue to do. We also had a wonderful visit from the governor, which was really, really impressive. The fact that they chose to come to Lansing to sign a bill, an education bill. I want to thank this board. They've been so tremendously supportive of making sure that Lansing can become a center of action, so to speak, a place where people want to come. And the fact that we were graced by not just the governor and a bunch of state senators and House of Representatives, but the fact that an action was taken in front of our children, an actual bill signing, to bring millions and millions of dollars to the support of our children around the state, which was really wonderful. You know, other things, I actually taught algebra II class today, which was super fun, which I really, really appreciated. I, we had our parent roundtable, or our family roundtable last week, with over 50 people that attended, which was really incredible. And that's just another example of bringing the families, bringing the community in to be with this district. We cannot do this alone. And anybody listening to this, please, if you want to, if you're a family member of a child in the district, if you want to come to the family superintendent roundtables, please reach out. Carrie Christian will take care of your, you know, getting you the information. And it was really just so powerful to have, you know, well over 50 people come to Halleck and talk. And then this week, I had my superintendent student roundtable, where a bunch of high school kids meet with me once a month and tell me all the good, the bad, and the ugly of what's going on. And, you know, I say all of this for two reasons. One, to laud everybody that is now an active participant in the work that we're doing, but also to say to the community, if you're a student, if you're a family member, if you're a community member, we have lots of different points for you to access and work with us. This week, I was, I don't know, interviewed. I was on whatever Justin Sheehan's podcast video thing was, which was awesome. And he kind of said, well, you know, how can people get involved? What can we do? And explain how, you know, we are working with the community. And so if you're a student in the high schools, certainly feel free to, you know, talk to your principals about being part of the superintendent's roundtable. If you're a family in the community, of a student in the community, in the school district, please talk to the district about joining the parent or family roundtable. And certainly, if you're a community member, if you'd like to tutor, if you'd like to mentor, if you'd like to work with us, please, please reach out. We can, we can only get better when the entire community is behind us. And so I just want to say how thrilled I am, you know, these last couple of weeks, seeing all this great progress from the work with the students, the work with the families, all the stuff that the teachers are doing. And it's really paying off. We have a lot more to go. I don't want to be Pollyanna-ish about this, but we really are making some significant strides. And it's thanks to this board, it's thanks to the community, and thanks to our educators, our parents, and really everybody for doing that. And since I see them, I certainly want to give a big shout out to the executive team for all of their terrific work. So with that being said, I want to turn it back over to our president, Ms. Wells.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for the superintendent this evening? All right, Seena, we're going to move on to our routine matters, which includes our committee reports. We have a finance committee report this evening. Dr. Kavanaugh.
Absolutely. So the Finance Committee met this Monday, which was the 21st. Our next meeting is November 18th, for those who are interested. In the Finance Committee meeting, we heard the results of an audit from Mayor Costerison, Costerison. I always pronounce it wrong. The news from the audit was really good, and they highlighted that they do a lot of audits around the state, and they are not always this good. So that's something for us to be proud of, certainly. There were no major issues found within the audit, so we're very glad about that. In the Finance Committee, we also discussed a new system for our school-based budgeting, to make sure that schools are on track. So there is kind of a check-in system that's going to happen first quarterly, and then as we get toward the end of the school year, every month, to make sure that schools are on track. And then finally, the detailed treasures report for the period of September 1st, 2024 through September 30th is attached to this evening's agenda. But the following are the highlights of the report. The beginning cash and investment balance was $60 million, 727,171. Receipts totaled $34 million, 523,690, while disbursements equaled $22 million, 269,700. Net inter-fund transfers totaled $16 million, 662,069 in interest from fund investments to the student and bond funds, as well as journal entries to remove the due-to, due-from in all funds. The monthly transfer to the general fund for bond expenses was $4 million, 143,974. So the ending general fund cash and investment balance on September 30th, 2024 was $60 million, 463,067. The general fund's cash and investment balance is $8 million, 529,601 greater as compared to the same time last year. We're glad about that. We also received $156 in donations during the month of September. So I want to shout out Miracle Man Cleaning Service and Blackbowed for their donations. I also want to draw your attention to the donations from My School Bucks, because this was something we also discussed in the Finance Committee meeting. There is a new system where if you'd like to shop online, you know, for merch that supports a certain school, then while you're doing that, that shopping, there's also an opportunity to make a donation to the school. And so we see a couple of lines here that says, "My School Bucks Donation." And so that is where that is coming from. So if you are in the market for some merch, please consider also making a donation, and that will show up as My School Bucks Donation. Madam President, that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you. And it's always, I don't want to instill any thunder from our auditors when they present, but it always is exciting to hear the district continues to remain being a low audit risk, which means they only have to audit 20% of our files, which also means that it's less work for the finance team, but it's because they do all the work on the front end to make that possible. So a big thank you to that team. Any additional questions or comments for Dr. Kavanaugh?
Madam President.
Ms. Nowitzki.
I just had a question at the end. I see a list of Contracted Services and Agreements report. I don't remember seeing that on previous reports. So if you could just explain what that list is.
Sure. We met with the Policy Committee.
We met with the Policy Committee a few weeks ago, and this is the forum. We decided that we would publish this information. So we present items that do not obtain board approval, mostly because they're grant-approved or written specifically in a grant to use a vendor, and therefore, the board doesn't really have a say. So we wanted to make sure we were being very transparent in publishing the contracts that have not gone before the board, and also software purchases and/or any emergency repairs.
Thank you. So I thought that might be what that is. So that's just a report that's not saying we need to approve these. They've already been approved versus through the policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure thing. Mr. Superintendent?
Just a follow-up, and I really want to highlight the work of the Policy Committee, is that there are rules and regulations that we have to follow, and then there is even better practices in terms of transparency. And I really appreciate that there's a move now, even though we don't legally have to do this, the idea that we want to be as transparent as possible with the way that we spend taxpayer dollars. And so for all of you listening at home or in the audience, you know, every time we do this, feel free to take a look at it, see where we are spending the tax dollars. But again, these are typically things like grant funding, which already has approval through either the federal government, state government, or is written within a certain grant. But, you know, we take very seriously the idea of taxpayer dollars being given to us to spend on our children. So we want to make sure that you know the money is well spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Seena, we're going to move on to our next committee report, which will be our Policy Committee update. Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. September and October has been working days for the Policy Committee, several meetings, several studies. And I want to thank the four board members that were present, and also the administration, Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Kek, Director of Office of Culture, Mrs. Black, and also the Secretary, Claudia. All of them were present and collaborating and tried to find new ways and have interpretation of the policies they had to create. And I have, and today, Dr. Navarres Martinez, that is going to continue doing, because what we studied was 2264, I think. Then please.
Yes. So in the Policy Committee, we are currently reviewing Policy 2264, which is our new Title IX policy. And we've been actually doing quite a bit of work on that. We're still have, I think, hopefully, one more meeting to discuss, but if we need more, we'll do more. And before we can bring it up to the board. And we keep giving ourselves more and more work, because I think we've come up with a couple more than we want to review. But like the superintendent said, I think we're all very committed to making sure that, you know, we have the best policies in place for our students, our faculty, and our staff. And so we're happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some policies on our agenda this evening for second reading and adoption. We can certainly take additional questions at that time, if there's motion on the floor to adopt those policies. Are there any additional questions related to the report?
I think the policy that just we are talking about, we are working, and we will continue working via consistency. Was a lot of investigations and reports, and the days were not consistent with the time that people need to solve the problems. They are there when some incidents happen. Then all that took time, and still have some questions with lawyers and also with Neola, to be sure that we do the best, and we have the best policy to present to you probably in the next two or three meetings.
Any questions? Do you have one, Ms. Moore? It's okay.
Yes, I do. I was just, just want clarification. So we're looking at Policy 2266, right?
That is the one we are going to vote today.
Okay.
The other one is 2264.
Okay. And the update is in green, right? We just added language. Yep, that's, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Madam President? Oh, no. Sure thing. 2266 is the nondiscrimination Title IX policy that will be in effect for anything that happened before August 1st of 2024.
All right. Thank you, guys. Great. That brings us on to our agenda. Next, we have our consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Madam President.
Ms. Williams?
I move that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented with the October 3 minutes, and October 10 informational studies minutes, and then the Treasury Report for September and Approval Expenditures as presented.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved by Ms. Williams. Did that come out of Dr. Kavanaugh? All right. It's been moved by Ms. Williams, supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes 7-0. Next on the agenda this evening, we have a recommendation to convene in closed session.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education recesses to closed session for purposes of considering material exempt from disclosure as it is permitted in the open meeting.
Moved by Ms. Williams, supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. Any questions or comments?
I have one comment.
Sure thing.
This will hopefully be very quick. So you guys can go out, and we'll come and get you. Don't go home. Thanks.
Just a, just a second. If I can get a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Dr. Navarres Martinez.
Yes.
Mr. Nabisky.
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Willis.
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. It is 6:22, and we are in closed session. Okay, it is 6:29. We are back in open session. That might be a record in closed session. Thank you very much. That brings us on in our agenda items. That would bring us to second reading and approval of our policies. May I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. We need to talk about what we went into closed session for. May I have a motion on our resolution?
Madam President.
Dr. Kavanaugh.
I move that the Board of Education approve the insolent litigation resolution as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Dr. Navarres Martinez. May, any questions or comments from colleagues? Seena, since it's a litigation, I am going to ask for a roll call vote.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Dr. Navarres Martinez.
Yes.
Mr. Nabisky.
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Willis.
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. That brings us on to second reading of, second reading and approval of our policies. May I have a motion?
Madam President.
Dr. Kavanaugh.
I move that the Board of Education receive the policies for second reading and approve them as presented.
It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by?
The board.
Dr. Rodriguez.
I want a opportunity.
It's okay. No, I didn't want to say. No problem. So our policies before us this evening for second reading and adoption, our Policy 2266, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. Policy 2370.01, online blended learning program policy, which includes updates. And Policy 5460, graduation requirements. Those are the titles of the three policies that are before us for update, that were updated for adoption. Any questions or comments from colleagues this evening? Dr. Rodriguez?
And the graduation requirement, I would like the board members to know that some of the changes were, the superintendent was the only one waiver for some credit. Now we put, he is facing many things, but maybe he can delegate in some cases. And the second one, nobody can waiver the 10 credits for the Merit Curriculum of the State of Michigan. Then this, then we are going to continue to find out what kind of courses are giving them credit for the curriculum, for the Merit Curriculum, what classes, what courses are the students taking, they apply the credit from, possible to apply to the Merit Curriculum. And that is something the administration will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, I didn't, in addition to that, it wasn't a change in the policy, but that was the first time, I think, I'd had really in-depth reading of, I'm calling it the lived experience credit, but the credit you can get for coming into school with certain experiences. That was, it's an interesting opportunity there for our students. So any additional questions or comments?
I have a question, Madam President.
Sure thing, Ms. Moore.
In our graduation policy, Policy 5460, in the last paragraph, it talks about commencement exercises. I'm just curious, in the last sentence reads, a student may be denied participation in the ceremony of graduation. However, when personal conduct is warned. I'm just wondering who denies it and what type of personal conduct, you know, commencement is special. And I'm just curious, like, what that looks like. Could you expound on that, Superintendent, please?
Oh, yeah, sure. So just so everybody's kind of playing along, the, I assume the paragraph is the commencement exercises will include only those students who have successfully completed requirements as certified by the high school principal. No student who has completed the requirements of graduation shall be denied a diploma. A student may be denied participation in ceremony, however, when personal conduct so warrants. What that really says is the principal, you know, if the child is on a 50-day suspension, things like that. But the decision is usually made by the principal, but it can then be appealed to, all the way up to me. It is very rare. Um, it is very rare. Um, you know, this, this would be around a feeling of being unsafe. Um, but, you know, what's nice is there's multiple, multiple steps. The first one would be from the principal themselves, then it would go to their, uh, there's supervisors, the, the senior directors, it would then go to Jessica as the deputy superintendent, and then it would come to me, and, um, you know, last year, we, we even created a space for some students that were really not going to walk, but we wanted, it was, it felt so important for them, that we even figured out a way for everybody to feel safe and have that child have that experience. So, the, this happening is super rare. Now, you notice that's been in the board policies for a long time. If it's something that the board wants to address, yeah, I think, I think that's, that's fine, but just know historically, that has been very, very, very rare.
I think that's something we should, should probably look at, because it's in there, and if something like that were to happen, and fifty-day suspension, thank God we don't do that in our district.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, sometimes, very, very rare, very, very rare.
Very, very rare.
But, uh, but yeah, so, um, yeah, so that's usually the only time that you would, you would have that.
All right, thank you.
Madam President, maybe that can be part of the, as, and administration regulations. I'm too clear about that.
Conduct.
Madam President.
Sure thing, Ms. Nowitzki.
I just wanted to comment and speak in favor of the change to Policy two-three-seven-oh-point-oh-one on the online blended learning programs to expand that K through twelve. I know we have a tremendous number of different options for students, and I'm glad to see that we're pursuing, intervening even earlier when we need to, to hopefully keep students on track, and I, I would hope that that investment will certainly play out benefits for our students, but potentially even be kind of cost-saving and time-saving for us down the road if we're able to put those supports in place sooner, that we have less work to do on the, on the end in high school. So, thank you to the staff for bringing this to us and pursuing all the programs that will come as a result of this change.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments this evening? C. None. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Dr. Navarez Martinez.
Yes.
Mr. Nowitzki.
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Willis.
Yes. Motion passes seven-zero. Um, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you to the board members. There's no easy task to follow the policies. It's, I think, it's not just numbers they give it to us, it's, um, criteria, is thinking skills, is developing new. Uh, many times we've had to follow the legislators' rules, but, um, I think the Policy Committee is moving forward. Still, we are behind, but I think it's moving forward and, and continue working with the, um, advisors that they are giving us, especially when we need to develop policies about different committees and maybe also the officers' meetings, then we will continue working.
Thank you. Um, stole the words right out of my mouth about thanking the Policy Committee for all of their hard work on this, but I appreciate it. Um, next item on the agenda would be any new business. We do not have any new business this evening, um, or discussion items, but we do have a report from Secretariat Announcements, Dr. Rodriguez. That's your secretary.
I don't want to talk anymore. Uh, thank you very much, Madam President, and same formation. October thirty-first has day for elementary schools. November fifth, elementary election day, and, you know, schools, and everybody knows the, our duties are. November twentieth, five P.M., Dan Johnson Fieldhouse Lancing Save Night.
Okay.
Lancing Save is a college savings program in the Lansing School District to help encourage our, our students to save for college with a free account from Michigan State Federal Credit Union. Until you start early, when you finish, you never know how much money you are going to have there. November twentieth, Pick Up Parents Community Advisory Council, six P.M., to forty-two-hundred Kavanaugh Avenue. Next board meetings. November seventh, regular board meeting. November fourteen, information study session. And November twenty-first, regular board meetings, and the public need to know, and we are need to know, that all meetings are going to be here in Eastern High School. That is all I got, Madam President.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Rodriguez?
I have a question. I haven't thought about this in a while. Um, the Lancing Saves program, do we still automatically start them for kindergartners? Lancing Save accounts, if we, as long as a family doesn't opt out? Yes? Cool, cool, kachoo.
Yep, and then actually every student that even comes in after kindergarten, if they're a new student, they get an account started for them as well.
Awesome. Thank you. It's just been a while since we talked about that. Um, we do not have any public comment on non-aging items, but we do have something special from the comms team.
So, um, October fifteenth ended Hispanic Heritage Month, um, but we didn't have our board meeting that we usually share things with. So, this year, we, the comms team created a video, uh, really to highlight Luton. Um, some really wonderful things have been happening at Luton lately, and, you know, we thought, what better thing than to kind of end a meeting with some, uh, fun conversation with the principal, some wonderful pictures of some kids, uh, and a conversation about why Hispanic heritage is so important, but of course, everyone's heritage is important, and how we care deeply about all of our families. So, Ryan, hit it.
Hispanic Heritage Month is always a huge event here at Luton. Uh, our community, especially here, you know, we're kind of centrally located in Colonial Village. Uh, a lot of the families in the surrounding community are of Latino descent, and that spark, that, that kind of ideology that comes from the Latino world arrives in the school, not just in the eyes and hearts of the students, but also in the teachers. And part of being a global identity school suggests this kind of, like, immersive experience in culture, and that culture is on our walls, that culture is in our classrooms. We are continuously celebrating what it means to be of Latino descent, not just in terms of language, but also in terms of identity. A lot of the teachers in the building are from Latin American countries. We have six teachers that are, um, you know, native speakers to Spanish, and then everybody, obviously, here has this kind of, like, love for Latino culture that is necessary for the building. And we, we try to cultivate in the students as well. You know, parents are really involved in the school in terms of what we do. You see their vision in terms of our, our school improvement team, in terms of our C.R.P.B.I.S. programs. There's always this kind of flair attached to everything we do, where we represent that global identity for not just, um, you know, being from Lansing, Michigan, but also with so many different Latin American countries being present here, they weave their way in and out of all of our programs. One of the biggest things that I like, uh, we do these programs where the students try to embody the flag of every single, like, Latino country, and so they will do research behind the flag, depending on, it's all the grade level contingent, right? Depending on the grade level, they try to, like, embody this idea of whatever the country is representing, and then it shows up and culminates in a big event at the end of it, where all of the families come in together. We had almost four hundred families sign in to our Hispanic Heritage Night, and then the students put, uh, their work from this, um, kind of, like, identity-based research, uh, on the walls, you know, and they, you see it in terms of, like, if somebody's representing, you know, Argentina, they have their flag for Argentina, and they'll bring in, like, specific cultural heroes of that, or with the older students, they might even do a paper that's researched, and they, they'll actually talk to their parents about that paper and what they did.
Thank you so much. Uh, great job. And again, just highlighting one of our wonderful, wonderful schools and how we're bringing in families. I mean, we were just saying, you know, four hundred families coming to a, a night is really special, but that's the kind of community that Luton is building, and certainly, uh, if anybody's listening who wants to think about sending their child to Luton, please let us know, and thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Um, next would be comments from board members.
Madam President.
Ms. Nowitzki.
I just wanted to report that we had the Parent Community Advisory Council meeting yesterday, actually, and, uh, had great conversation about special populations, so thank you to Social, uh, Deputy Superintendent Keck for presenting that to us. I think we're getting that presentation as a board soon, so we'll see that information, and thank you to the community members who came. Just want to encourage community members to consider, uh, coming to those meetings. We do provide a meal and, uh, childcare for, for, uh, students and young family members, so it's a great opportunity to be with, uh, the district administrators and other parents and community members, to dialogue about things happening in the district. It's really, uh, phenomenal to have that access, so encourage people to consider that, and just to, again, highlight the numerous things we're doing in the area of special populations, uh, around diversity and multiculturalism, and also our, our Ebersol and Equine Center. I think those are two unique programs that I don't believe anyone else in the state, or, I don't know if in the country have two things like that, that our school district has. Just comment, I was able to attend the, the Halloween-themed event at the Equine Center, and to go on a hayride through the woods and see deer running in an urban school district was just so fascinating. You know, I grew up in a rural community where that was the norm, but didn't have access to most of the things that this district offers. So to know that, um, you know, my children have access to all of the benefits of an urban district, but can still be in touch with, uh, you know, the natural world like that is a really unique thing, and so we'll also offer that up to parents who are considering, you know, whether or not to send their children to the district, or how to engage with us. It's a gem of a facility and a very unique, uh, service that we have for students of all abilities, uh, at the Equine Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nowitzki. I'm glad we have that resource.
Madam President.
Uh, Ms. Williams.
Um, we are getting ready for the holidays again, and last year, Christina Tolcart, the staff, um, Lori, everybody, volunteers and everything came out, and so this year it's going to be November twenty-third, and we're just going to load the buses like we did last year, ride around. I had the pleasure of going last year. Talk about having a blast, even with a boot on. I did have a boot on, but we have four teenagers. Three of them were from different high schools, but they volunteered to get credit. Um, our bus, I think it was just four teenagers, and I was the parent, and we had a driver, but we went as far out as to eat in Rapid and back, just to know that we have students that far out that were appreciative. They came to the buses, their families were, so we have a lot of selfies. I think I sent them all to you, so I'm hoping that they're going to provide updates of what we did last year prior to that, and that, you know, we need volunteers, not just us, but we would like the community to come out and help volunteer as well. So looking forward to seeing you.
Hi, everyone. This is our last board meeting before the election on November fifth, so I want to remind everyone to vote. If you're not registered to vote, that's okay. You can still register at the city clerk's office, um, including Election Day, um, and so it's not too late to get involved, and I also just want to encourage people to not just look at the top of the ticket, but, um, it's a very long ballot this year, and so please make sure that you are considering all of the things that are on your ballot. There are many resources available that will show you an example ballot, so you know exactly what's going to be on your ballot for your specific address, um, and so I encourage you to take advantage of those resources, and I encourage you to make sure that you're registered, double-check that you're registered, and then make a plan to vote.
Thank you, Dr. Kavanaugh. Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this morning I attended the Michigan Association School Board's four-days conference, and I was lucky last year that I got to be there free because I got the ticket, then, but there's so many teams there, that it was difficult for me to select one, but I chose Board Superintendent Relations, and what new, you know, I had to congratulate, I was here, hearing what all the board members there was saying, what was going on, and there are boards, and I can't have to congratulate the, the leaderships of this board, because many of the things I heard, never hear here. Then, uh, we are working together. I think that we have, um, a great relationship and, um, and open policies, then I, I think that, I was there just to be sure that we were doing the right thing, and I think we are, then, um, we will continue doing tomorrow. I think that, that was for me a good, a good, um, time this morning to find out that this board is doing, with the superintendent doing the job for the, for the students.
Thank you, and I do want to note, Ms. Williams is scooting out of here to go be one of our additional voting delegates at the M.A.S.B. Conference, so I do appreciate your diligence to that, representing the board there. Um, and that brings us to any additional questions from board members? C. None. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Dr. Rodriguez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. At six forty-nine, we are adjourned.